I'm not sure.
Okay. We're good.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So I'm gonna stop my recording.
No, no, don't.
No, don't, okay.
Well, it looks, okay. Yeah, now it looks like it's just Janine recording. Okay, I think we're good.
All right, let me open up. Board meeting.
Janine, this is your meeting, right?
Yes.
I'm not, okay.
Well, like I said, this is, I didn't have problems the last time with, for whatever reason, I'm having issues.
It says it's recording, Janine.
Yes, but I'm getting to board docs right now.
Okay.
To open up the agenda. Why can't I see on my screen? Hey, can you view my screen now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I'm calling to order the organizational meeting of the Hastings-on-Hudson Board of Education. It's July 7th at 10:10 a.m. I'm going to administer the oath of office to our two newly elected board trustees. I will start with Doug Sun Time. So Doug, repeat after me. I, Doug Sun Time.
I, Doug Sun Time.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of board trustee.
Of board trustee.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Town of Greenberg.
Town of Greenberg.
Westchester County, New York.
Westchester County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Doug.
Thank you.
And do we have Jeremy Galan on the line?
Yes, hello there.
Okay, hi Jeremy, welcome. Congratulations on becoming elected a new board trustee. So if you'd repeat after me, I, Jeremy Galan.
I, Jeremy Gallan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of board trustee.
Of the office of board trustee.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Town of Greenberg.
Town of Greenberg.
Westchester County, New York.
Westchester County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll go back. Okay, we will now take a nomination for board president.
I nominate Lauren Berman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Allison.
Okay. And I have a vote, all in favor. That's everyone, I believe. Okay, all right, congratulations, Lauren. You are the board president and I will administer the oath of office to you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. I, Lauren Berman.
I, Lauren Berman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of board president.
Of the office of board president.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Town of Greenberg.
Town of Greenberg.
Westchester County, New York.
Westchester County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, let's see, all right. So Lauren, you now take over the rest of the agenda as board president for the 2020-2021 school year.
All right.
And you'll begin by asking for a nomination and election of a board vice president.
All right, may I have a nomination for the role of board vice president?
I nominate Sylvia Robles.
That's Allison.
Is there a second?
Second. You want?
Doug, okay.
All in, all in favor, please?
Okay, unanimous?
Congratulations.
I guess you have to read the oath, right?
All right, and so now I administer the oath of office to Sylvia. So if you could repeat after me, Sylvia. I, Sylvia Robles, do solemnly swear.
I, Sylvia Robles, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of vice, board vice president.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board vice president.
Of the Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Of the Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Of the town of Greenberg, Westchester County, New York.
Of the town of Greenberg, Westchester County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sylvia.
Thank you.
All right, so now the recommendation is to appoint Janine Jenauer as district clerk for the 2020-21 school year. And I believe we need to vote on that as well. And so.
One quick question, Janine, can we take these as like a consent or do we?
After this.
After this.
After this one, everything else becomes a consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Is, is there a recommendation to appoint Janine Jenauer as district clerk for the 2020-21 school year?
I move to appoint Janine.
Who was that?
That was Jody.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, let me just pull up this oath. Janine, could you please repeat after me? I, Janine Jenauer, do solemnly swear.
Janine Jenauer, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District.
Of the town of Greenberg, Westchester County, New York.
Town of Greenberg, Westchester County, New York.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. All right, so we have additional appointments. Nine through nineteen. It appears. And then additional recommendation, additional appointments, I'm sorry, all the way to number fifty-two. Are there any questions on any of the items or appointments for eleven through fifty-two?
Yeah, I have a issue or a thought about item number thirty-nine.
All right.
Something that caught my eye, we're paying substitute teachers the full teacher rate after twenty days consecutive in one classroom. I don't know if this is the time to consider looking at that issue or if this is something we can consider at a further meeting. Other school districts have ninety days before you start paying two teachers for the same job. And my concern would be, we're going into a very unusual year where we might have some teachers that are out for considerable time. And twenty days is a month. And I think something the board could consider would be a forty-five day or a sixty day. Other school districts abuse this practice as we do want to definitely pay substitute teachers that have stepped up and become quasi-full-time teachers. But I think twenty days is too early to start paying somebody at triple their rate. The substitute teacher gets a hundred dollars a day. And if after twenty days, their rate would go up to about three hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Lauren, can I, can I just speak to that? It's, it's actually in the HDA contract. So in order to change that provision, we would have, it actually states in the, the teacher's contract speaks to when someone becomes either what we would call like a regular substitute or a leave replacement. And it does tag it to twenty, after twenty consecutive days in an assignment, they've become a regular substitute. And then after, after closer to ninety, they become like a leave replacement. So it's, then they are also entitled to benefits. But the, they do, that is contractual obligation that we currently have.
I was also gonna say that I think, Maureen, you would know this best, but I understand what you're saying, Jeremy. But I think this has been our practice for quite a long time, hasn't it? Doesn't mean we can't change the practice.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's not even a practice, right now it's in the contract, that's all I'm saying. We actually have to be changing the contract.
contractual agreement for a long time.
Correct, yeah. But, but I do, I, I'm aware, like Jeremy had mentioned, that that's not the case in all districts. So it could be something that could be looked at, but it would have to be looked at as part of a negotiation with the HDA.
I can also, not that I'm, you know, I have enough experience with this particular stipulation in the HDA contract, but I can tell you, it's very difficult to get substitutes. There's been a shortage across the state for quite a bit. Even after, you know, in my previous experience, we aggressively recruited substitutes. And one of the big issues is the compensation. So I can imagine that, you know, having this provision here ensures, and especially to your point, Jeremy, that in the coming year, you know, there's an anticipation that substitutes are going to be even more critical, depending on what, you know, what the, what the next school year looks like. So I can see this as being an important benefit for, you know, not only enticing or recruiting substitutes, but keeping them here because the compensation, you know, becomes more attractive after a period of time. And it's also continuity for teachers to have consistency with substitutes that, you know, they're not changing, switching gears, you know, regularly because they just have a steady flow of people coming through. So as I said, I don't know about the specifics of the stipulation, but I can speak generally about, as I said, how difficult it is to recruit and retain substitutes.
As it remains a piece of the HDA contract, it looks like it's something that needs to remain as is in the agenda. Is there a motion to approve items eleven through fifty-two as a consent agenda?
Oh, unless Jeremy Gallan, if you don't want to vote in favor of thirty-nine, we could take that separate.
No, I wanted to know when we could discuss it further. I'll be voting for consent on items.
Lauren, just, just to be clear, it's actually items eight through fifty-two, not eleven.
Oh, thank you. You're right, thank you very much, Doc. It is items eight through fifty-two as a consent agenda.
That's actually, I guess the administrative oath is eight, so it's actually nine.
Nine. Is there a motion?
Allison made a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? So at this point, is there a motion to adjourn to the regular Board of Education meeting?
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? So at this point, I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Hastings-on-Hudson Union Preschool District, Tuesday, July seventh, 2020. Are there any announcements or should we move forward to the administrative contents? Dr. Henning Piedmont, are there any announcements or would you like to move forward with the administrative comments? We, we can't hear you.
Yes, we should move forward to the administrative comments.
Great.
And I'll go ahead and start. So first of all, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Berman for being selected as the Board of Education trustee, I mean, president for this year and for Ms. Sylvia, Sylvia Robles for being selected as the Hastings Board of Education Vice President. I look forward to working closely with you and I'm here to help in any way that I possibly can. I'd also like to congratulate Jeremy Galan for his, his first formal Board of Education meeting. Again, same, the same is extended to you, Jeremy, if ever you'd like to meet with me or you have questions, you know, don't hesitate, you know, to reach out to me, I'm more than happy, you know, happy to help in any way that I can through the, you know, the early transition. I'd also like to congratulate and welcome Jennifer Spirelli and Kevin Hanlon, who assume their new official roles of principal for Ms. Spirelli and assistant principal for Mr. Hanlon of the Farragut Middle School. They started on July first and have been very busy getting acquainted with the building and, and the staff that's here and the, the school schedule and so forth and meeting staff and making plans for meeting students and parents. So we're very happy that they are officially here and look forward to their, you know, the movement towards, you know, whatever happens next year and in just being strong leaders for the Farragut Middle School. This week, Maureen and I met with Cliff Gabrielson. He's the account representative for the Alteris Consulting Group, who's our new consulting group firm who's working with us on safety and security plans, which are, you know, more and more important for school districts. But they also are assisting us with our school reentry planning efforts. So in the meeting this week with, with Cliff, we reviewed the school reentry planning guide and template guidance document, which is, you know, going to help us to eventually put into place, you know, what we need to do across, you know, six very broad areas, which include instruction and technology, facilities, physical, reentry, safety and security, transportation, food services and business, medical, mental health and athletics and co-curricular. As you know, our governor has not provided guidance yet with regards to what actually goes into his plan. We, of course, in every school district plus Alteris, which has been leading a number of school districts in the region, has a pretty good sense of perhaps what, you know, we might find as, you know, areas that we have to plan for. And again, they're using the CDC as a guidance, you know, document as well to, you know, to, to give us, you know, give the school districts that they're working with some parameters to work with them. So we were very happy with that partnership and we feel very strongly that we're in good hands with regards to leadership and, you know, just being able to ask questions and pose certain scenarios with them. As I said, they're in a guidance capacity, but, you know, they are, they've been doing the work to, you know, which gives them the credibility to, to be able to provide that guidance to us. Two recommendations that they're making to their clients is that, you know, as a way of kind of gaining a sense of, not that, you know, this is, you know, a number that we can hold anyone to, but that we should perhaps survey our community to ask, you know, how likely they are to send their children to school in September or next year? And how likely are they to use transportation? Some of the districts are doing or, you know, administering just that, you know, getting information by submitting a question to the community around those two points. It's just a way to help us to kind of, you know, mobilize or shift gears or just plan for that. And then again, that could change in August. I mean, this is, you know, July seventh, a lot can happen between now and the official start of the school year. But just having that information would be helpful. And also, you know, gaining a sense of, you know, what some of the concerns are. I mean, we can speculate what some of the concerns are, but just kind of, you know, making sure that we're, we're doing the outreach to learn ourselves. One of the things that we can make more readily available and known to our community in terms of, you know, if you're not, if you don't plan to send your children to school, you still have to be educated, they still have to be educated. And in New York State, the, the only other option to not being physically present in school or being enrolled in school, whether it's virtual or brick and mortar, is to go to homeschooling, you know, Commissioner's Regulation 100.10. An individualized home instruction plan has to be created and approved, and Melissa Samansky is in charge of that. So we're going to make that information available to our parents in case they may not know. And so if they are anticipating that they're not going to have their children officially enrolled in, in Hastings, and that's certainly their prerogative and choice, but the, but New York State requires that another form of education takes place. I just wanted to, to make sure that I mentioned that today. We've been hearing, you know, around the region that some parents are planning that. So we wanted to be sure that we, you know, we gave them all the information necessary to make that decision. I also wanted to mention that this, that the governor has extended the in-person board meeting suspension until August fifth. So we can continue to have virtual meetings until that point. And then, you know, the governor will decide whether or not he is planning to extend that, that particular order. With that said, that concludes my comments. And happy first, you know, official board meeting for the new school year, the 2021, twenty, yeah, the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you. Ms. Samansky, are there comments that you wanted to share?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to echo the welcomes and congratulations from Dr. Henning Piedmont. I'd like to provide some updates around curriculum and instruction. So recently, we have engaged in some K-12 mathematics committee work. Greg Stevens, Kathy Williams, who's the co-founder and executive director of U-Cube from Stanford University and I, began working with the committee and it is K-12. And the focus of our early days were around cultivating a shared vision for mathematics, developing a cohesive team and having teachers actually participate in the mathematics, really to ground their experience and thinking about the student learning process. The group delved into research. We began exploring the standards for mathematical practice. And where we left off was really looking at developmental variations across the different grades and across the different buildings. So we will be continuing this work. The group actually decided that it would be valuable to be collecting student work and to be thinking about what is it that we can connect and ground to our practice. And so that work is going very well and I'm thrilled to be working with the members of that committee. It's a really excellent group. The summer learning program is going to begin next week on Monday. Currently, we have one hundred four students who have enrolled. We've been very busy finalizing class lists and organizing schedules, developing course content, procuring resources, rostering students, designing professional training and getting that up and running. And in addition, outreach to families. I'd like to thank everyone who's been involved in the process. There's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work going on. I'd especially like to thank Adriana Badra, my secretary, Lynn Walker, for Human Resources and Personnel, who is, I noticed on the call today. And also Michelle Porter, who is working with all of our data to help get that up and running. Courageous Conversations. Janice Mateo Toledo and a team of faculty members, including Jamie Nedwick, Erica Melvin, Debbie Troop and Erica Williams, have been developing courageous conversations lessons for Hillside, specifically fourth graders. They're calling it Sparks to mirror what occurs in the middle school in fifth grade. And the Sparks lessons will be delivered during students' library classes. Valerie, Luke Man Ramsey and I also met with members of the faculty, four from the elementary school, seven from the middle school, eight from the high school. And this was our educator-focused group to explore opportunities to enhance distance learning based on the feedback that we've been receiving from surveys, from the home help hours, from the superintendent's chats. So we have had an initial session together and this work will be ongoing. And so far, we've focused on the understanding challenges that have been faced by students and families, considering practices that could be enhanced to better meet students' needs and then thinking about how we leverage the things that have already been working very well and systematizing those things. There's been work, early work that's been started around a culturally responsive curriculum audit. Janice Mateo Toledo and I brought together a number of available department chairs and, and faculty members who are available this summer to begin work on a curriculum audit. And the goal was for teachers to begin describing where and how they are incorporating curriculum activities or standards that are related to non-neurocentric perspectives and counter narratives. So Janice and I did a bare amount of pre-work to that, thinking about definitions that would help create a shared sense of understanding of our goals. And then together with the group, we co-created some questions to drive the work. So we were thinking about what are we doing systemically and intentionally? What is happening anecdotally? Where are there some opportunities? How can we do them more regularly, thoughtfully, intentionally? And also, what would I like to learn more about? So thinking about building cultural and racial proficiency of the staff. And then finally, I would like to acknowledge the academic challenge team. Michael Wilson shared with us that the Hastings High School succeeded at becoming academic challenge national champions, small school division for the third time in four years. So congratulations to Atri Ray, Adam Oppenheimer, Jacob Prissament, Charles Linder and Alexander Gordon. We are very proud of Sofia Maniero, Caleb Painter, Ryan Wang, Charlotte Rubin, Martin Trupeski and Tyler Milkie. Our second team. Our second team that made the playoffs before losing a very close match. So congratulations to everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maureen, did you have comments as well?
Yes, I do. Just to provide an update on some of our construction work, the roofing project at Hillside is now currently more than halfway complete. The entire roof is now watertight. And we anticipate that project wrapping up in the next month. The construction manager has been very pleased with the work of the contractor. And there has been no change orders on this job, which is actually a very positive thing, meaning that the scope of work and there was no unanticipated additional costs associated with that work thus far. The boiler replacement, which is another large timely job that is currently going on, is on schedule. The entire boiler room in this complex has been gutted, and the replacement of the tubing for the new boiler is well underway. We anticipate the boiler will be on site by late August, early September. And we're confident will be up and running prior to the beginning of the heating season. The other projects, the floor abatement was done at Hillside last week. And the infrastructure work there is continuing on schedule as well. We're still waiting on the approval for the Hillside addition. And I hope to have some more information today after my meeting with the architect group. As the board may have heard, the governor is allowing moderate contact sports to begin to run, and that was effective yesterday, July 6. Our local Little League team will be running two teams on the Burke Estate. They're also running programs throughout the village. And as we've done throughout this COVID time, we have been working with the village and staying in close contact with them. And as far as facilities usage, we're both providing according to the state regulations. We have reviewed the COVID procedures with the group, the Hastings League, that will be using our fields. And we did speak to legal counsel to ensure the document that we provided to them, which is the Health Department regulations and an explanation to ensure that they are complying with all of the regulations to run a program here. And they have, in fact, given us, signed off on that. And there's also a baseball clinic that will be running twice a week, which is run by a local sports program. And that will be two days a week, two hours each day. They've also submitted the necessary paperwork. And unlike the Little League, they will be paying us a usage fee for the facilities use at Burke. And also, if there's any use of our dugouts by either the Little League or any outside groups, we do have cleaning fees that they will be paying us in order to make sure that those areas are sanitized after use. As part of our facilities use, it has been brought to our attention that some unauthorized groups are either have or are planning to be running some programs on school property over the summer. I guess with the lack of camps for children, some people were hoping to do some things. But as we know, in order to use the school facility, we need to go properly through the facilities office procedure to ensure that people have the correct insurance in order to run programming here. So the facilities office will be sending out a blast to the community, reminding everyone of the procedures in order to run programming on school grounds. And that'll be happening later today. As Valerie had mentioned, we did meet with the Alteris Group, who is the district's new security consultants. In addition to helping us with our reentry plan, I've sent to them our current school safety plans for each building, as well as the district's safety plan. And they are in the process of reviewing those. These plans, as they are every year, need to be adopted by the board. And there is a common process, a common period, that we do have to post the plans. So I'm hoping to be able to share. There probably would only be a few updates, because year to year, they'll be making sure that they believe everything should be in there. It should. And we'll be sharing a draft of those plans with the board in the coming weeks for your review. And of course, because we have to adopt it before the beginning of the school year. So that's all I have.
I just have one quick question for, actually for Melissa. The stuff you're working on, either Courageous Conversations or Culture Responsive Curriculum Audit with Janice and others, is there a timeline where you're expecting to, the group is expecting to present something to the board? Or at least roll something out that you'll present to the board? I'm just curious about when and how we'll know more about that.
Yes, the curriculum audit is in its infancy phase right now. I would like to get many more people involved in that work. So we've only just begun that. In terms of the Sparks work with Janice and the people that have been involved in that, they've made really good headway. And that's something that we can look into arranging.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's now the public comment portion of our meeting. I don't know if, Janine, if anyone in advance has notified you a public comment?
No, no one has mentioned a comment. Is there anyone in our audience? If there is, we limit comments to three minutes. And you must state your name and if you're a resident of Hastings. All right, there is a second public comment near the end of the meeting. We have a number of business items. They're broken into two sections. There are items one through 16 as the first group, Business Items A. Are there any questions or comments from board trustees regarding these items?
I just have a question, Valerie, about the webmaster services. So it says $20,000. It seems like that document is essentially a request for a more detailed proposal. Is that what it is? Or you're on mute, Valerie? Valerie, you're on?
I'm on mute, yes. So I've been negotiating with Putnam Northern West District BOCs with Ellen Lane, who's been helpful in trying to make sure that we select the most cost-effective webmaster services. So the webmaster would be the person who's organizing everything on the website, placing things in the categories that we spent time last year, a number of us, including board trustees, reviewing how our website is difficult to navigate. And that process led us to reformatting the website to make sure that our community can find, locate information more easily. To maintain the work that took place this year, a webmaster is an essential part of that maintenance in terms of where things belong, where they should be linked in other places of the website, refreshing information to make sure that the same information, that maybe a lead piece on your webpage, your main page, reflects current updates or something else is placed there. Making sure that information that may be perhaps outdated is updated or removed altogether. So it's a really essential service that we lacked, which is how our website became kind of like a very messy closet in terms of where things were, the extent to which we really want our community to be able to easily use our website. So that's the nature of the services that would be covered under the webmaster contract.
Is part of that some training as well? Or a way that I've seen now, what I had on my phone before, I couldn't see one day per week for 40 weeks. Now I see that in there. Is, I imagine there's going to be times where stuff has to put up. Is that one day, like they're here on site for a day? Or is that two hours each day over a number of days? Or I'm just wondering timing-wise. They're here on a Monday, something big has to go up on a Tuesday. Are they going to be training people here to use it? Use a content management system?
Right now, the one day, since they have to establish a contract around some kind of time structure, one day doesn't mean that they're going to be available remotely one day. It could be the equivalent of throughout that week of a day. So it's my expectation that if something needs to go up on our website, that other than the Hastings happenings or a message that Janice will be still responsible for the messages that go out. That's different from the website. But then that information also has to go on our website, which even if it means that over time, we train certain people to use a convention that is going to be maintained, that's something we'll look at as we move along to ensure that we never go back to that place where we had a very difficult to manage and navigate website.
Okay, thank you.
Question about eight and nine, the bus contracts? I don't see any attachments, such, maybe I missed something. Can you just, maybe, Maureen, can you give an update on those?
You, oh, on?
Ardsley.
Yeah, so these were, because of all the changes, these were extended contracts. So in order for us to have a summer program, Ardsley is going to contract with us for that piece. And because it has to go through legal, it was just for one student to be transported. They have to get the document back from the state. So they had us put it on there so that we could approve it. And then the board president will have to sign it subsequent to the approval when we get the paperwork on it, which will come from. And then the academy will also just, moving forward with the extension with them, but we'll have the documents to approve when Ardsley brings them to us. Because it's a state contract, so they had to get an approval for it. So I'll share those with it. But Ardsley, our transportation director, had asked just to put this on it so that we can anticipate using the service.
Are the rates, the rates are the stuff that we agreed?
The rates, we rolled over, Doug, remember? We made the agreement with them. They rolled over our CPI. So the rate's already locked in based on the agreement that the board approved in June.
Yeah, we approved these rates already, Jeremy.
Yes.
For eight as well?
Correct, yep. Everyone was rolling over at CPI.
And Maureen, can you just remind me? I know we went through this, but there's just been so many moving parts. The, I didn't have it up, but it was somewhere in the $30,000 some thousand for H2M for item number five. And that is, again, relooking at the plans for FMS auditorium? And what exactly is entailed in that work? I know you've said it before, but just so that I remember.
Right, so we had different, our initial plan for that space, the original designs that were delivered to us, the costs associated with those, we felt were, again, looking at trying to keep as much money in the capital reserve and looking at the project cost and some of the construction that'd be required to reinforce the floor there. The decision was made to go back and redesign the space in a more cost-efficient manner, similar to what was initially discussed pre-bond in terms of the design there. So being we needed our construction documents for that space that needed to be submitted to the state redone for us. And again, we do have to, the architects create a certain amount of designs that then are designs that then become construction drawings. And because we're redesigning some of the work we had considered doing, because we found after the cost estimates were done that that would be very cost prohibitive, and it would also be a huge structural under change in the building. And it really just felt as though it was going to be too much money. So the cost here is they had to redesign some of that work, Doug, that they've already done. So it's like redoing some of the work that's already been done.
Can you just remind the board the order of magnitude decrease?
Oh, it's at least a half a million. By looking and changing that restructuring of the floor, it's close to almost half a million dollars in savings.
Okay, thank you.
And that's why paying the extra money really would make sense, because the cost in doing that, and actually, it was going to impact the library below it because of the structural steel that had been put in. It really, for what we were gaining, was so little that it really did not make sense to move forward with that design. So this reflects, again, by changing that design, we're going to be saving, so a half a million dollars that would be required to provide that, to pay for that original design that was being considered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions on the business items, one through 16? Is there a motion to approve business items, one through 16?
Or second?
All in favor? In addition, there's a business addendum B, which includes five items. Were there any questions regarding business addendum items, one through five? I had asked Dr. Henning Piedmont and Ms. Samansky to speak a bit about item number five, which was the mentoring coaching contract. And I did. I know that they could speak to some clarity that that professional development was in part already included in our professional development budget item, which I didn't understand, which is why I was asking about it.
Sure. I'm happy to begin. So this was something, as you mentioned, that was included as we were budgeting for the upcoming school year, specifically knowing that there would be the possibility of a transition for a new principal. So that was something that we incorporated. We did not anticipate the new assistant principal early in the process. However, we are confident that either through the use of Title II funding or a shift in my own professional development line, we would be able to allocate for this. So the purpose is really that we have two new administrators coming into the middle school. We want to ensure a successful transition and also a sounding board and a coach for each of them to work with that will offer the opportunity to push their thinking around specific problems of practice and someone for whom it's not a supervisory role. It's a different type of relationship where it's confidential. The Sanes Mentor Coaching Program is very well-known. And this program is done up to 35 weeks. And there is a built-in time to meet monthly for one hour. And typically, what I've heard, even though that's not in the contract, is that person develops a relationship and there's a constant communication. So the two people that have been identified, and I know that it's not noted in there, have tremendous expertise. We are extremely excited about it. One of them has been an educator for 33 years. And so 23 of those years has been spent as an administrator. And this person has been involved as both a middle school leader and also a high school leader, and has had a proven record of instructional leadership. He's increased the number of collegiate and advanced placement courses. He's worked on the development of PBIS. He's increased graduation rates when he was in the high school of over 10%. He has been very connected to school and community relations, professional practices, technology, the diversity committee, and APPR, which is Evaluation of Teachers, and also PBIS. So he has extensive experience. And the other person that we are looking at as a coach is a legend in the region. And she's phenomenal. And she is serving at the Sanes level. And that is, I'm just pulling her bio here. She's actually the Director of Professional Development for Sanes, which is the School Administrators Association of New York. which is the School Administrators Association of New York State. So she is responsible for developing and delivering professional learning in over seven thousand school leader members across the state. So she has extensive experience. So the recommendation that we're making is to support the transition of Jennifer Sporelli and Kevin Hanlon, again, support their capacity building, ensure their longevity and contribute to a successful transition.
I'll add in terms of my own personal experience with coaching models. It's a, in the last decade, coaching, even over mentoring, has been a preferred way to develop leaders. So it's not a deficit model. It's not that Jennifer and Kevin have something wrong with them and they, you know, lack the ability to do the job that they've been hired to do. It's in recognition of how difficult the job is. School building leadership, especially if you are just starting in that particular role. So it's a new role for Jennifer and it's a new role for Kevin. But if we want to promote the success of those leaders, and if you, and if you needed to take a look at any of research, or the Wallace Foundation's done a phenomenal amount of research on how to build a principal pipeline, which then in turn, you know, promotes the success of schools and districts and it also improves student learning. And in a lot of the research, there is a direct connection to, you know, there is a statistically significant connection to the effectiveness of a school principal or leadership team on student outcomes. So it's really, the recommendation is made in that spirit of, you know, if we really want to invest in the ongoing success of our leaders. And it's not because, you know, no one else in the building can, will be working with them. Obviously, you know, the wonderful administrators who are here will be resources to Kevin and Jennifer. But it's, you know, having a coach, it's analogous to expecting a batter to continue to be, you know, a superb batter and without having, you know, a coach to just build upon that, their existing strengths. I'm not, you know, a sports person, that's as far as I can go with that example. But, you know, I think everybody gets the point of the importance of it. It's not a deficit model. It's a, an enhancement of existing strengths and building upon those. So thank you. And as Melissa mentioned, that's, it's been a conversation since we met last July. I was, you know, had known about the service and said, you know, as soon as, you know, I get a chance to use it, I want to make sure that we do. So thank you in advance for supporting this recommendation.
Thank you for fleshing that out a bit. Were there any further questions from trustees about that or any of the other items, one through five in the business addendum? Is there a motion to approve business addendum items, one through five?
So moved.
On a second?
Second.
All in favor? We're going to move on to personnel.
Lauren, can I interrupt a minute? I apologize. I have another meeting at eleven that I'm actually running. I apologize to everyone. I didn't think this would be, historically, this was just a meeting to do a reorganization. I didn't think we would go on that long. So I apologize for that and I want to just throw something out for you to either talk about in the board comments section or for us to talk about in the future. And it has to do with names. I first thought about it because of Jeremy Galland and I don't know if it bothers you if your name is mispronounced, but I thought it was good for us to all know, since we're going to have two Jeremys and often go to last names. But also I'm wondering if we could talk about, or maybe just people think about, how we want to refer to each other, whether it's first name, Ms., Mr. Doctor, so that, I guess it should be consistent. And I guess it's a matter of how formal we think we should be, what's appropriate. So I don't know that it's something we have to talk about right now, but maybe people could think about it and something we could talk about at another meeting.
Thank you, Jody.
Yes, and congratulations Lauren and Sylvia and everybody else, continue to stay healthy.
Thank you. So we'll move along to the personnel appointments. We firstly have appointment A, which is the appointment of the inclusion facilitator. I don't know if Valerie and Melissa, you wanted to speak briefly about that because this is a new position within the district. I believe that Ms. Kumar is on the meeting.
Absolutely. Actually, we have, we have Laura Sullivan, who's going to just provide some sort of background as to why we chose Kristin Kumar for this really important position. And I want to thank Laura and Tessa and the entire committee. Jennifer Sporelli was involved, a number of people were involved in this process. And, you know, because we have some really superb people in the district, you know, one of those people applied among others. And we're very, I'm very thrilled to, you know, that Kristin applied and that ultimately she was selected. So I'll turn it over to Laura Sullivan to provide some background information.
Okay, hi, good morning, everyone. So I'm going to talk a little bit about two things. One, a little bit about the process that we went through and then I'm going to share some background on Kristin Kumar. So Mr. Stewart, Ms. Sporelli and I reviewed the resumes that were submitted through a variety of platforms. We invited three candidates to meet with our committee, which included us as well as Ms. Lori McKay, who's a speech and language pathologist, and also the K-12 Special Education Coordinator, and Ms. Brittany Scultedy, who is a middle school special education teacher, and Ms. Barbara Rizzo, who is a decepticon president as part of our committee. And at the conclusion of the interviews, each of the three candidates were asked to complete a writing task. And then after hearing from the committee and reviewing the writing tasks, and it was pretty clear that Mrs. Kumar was really, you know, stood out from, from the rest of the candidates. Just to share a little bit about Kristin. Ms. Kristin Kumar received her bachelor's degree from Towson University in 2005 and her master's degree from Fordham University in 2007. In addition, she received an advanced certification in literacy from Mercy College in 2012 and she's currently working on her certification in educational administration. Ms. Kumar joined the Hillside staff in 2006. She taught general education for two years and then special education. Ms. Kumar has been an integrated co-teacher. She's taught the learning lab and reading instruction. Due to her Wilson certification, her expertise in literacy and her overall knowledge in differentiated instruction, she is sought after for guidance and advice from her colleagues. As Ms. Kumar's supervisor in the role of assistant principal, principal and now Director of Special Education, I've had the pleasure of watching Kristin grow into a strong advocate for students and a role model for her peers. She has the ability to form genuine trusting relationships with all stakeholders. Ms. Kumar strongly believes in inclusive practices and has demonstrated a passion for this area as she's always looking for opportunities to build her toolkit. Kristin and I have had many, many in-depth conversations long before the inclusive schooling came, long before inclusives, I'm sorry, I think I just got knocked off. Inclusive schooling joined us about just her strong beliefs around inclusion and her philosophy and the practices that she, that she implements. Ms. Kumar has participated in numerous district and building level committees and has held several, several Schedule B positions, including coaching. Most recently, she has been the Special Education Team Leader at Hillside. Ms. Kumar's been married for twelve years to Raj, who works at Mercy College. They have two boys. Ms. Kumar is an active member of their lives, coaching them in baseball and serving on the board for the Little League, local Little League. I also thought that all of you would enjoy this little tidbit, as I'm sure each of you can appreciate, that Ms. Kumar has just been appointed to the Board of Education at the Mechanical Hills School District in her hometown. So I thought that was a very interesting and just an example of how passionate she really is about education overall. So with that said, it is with great pleasure that I recommend Ms. Kumar to the position of inclusion facilitator at the Farragut Middle School.
Any questions? Thank you, Laura. Is, is there a motion to approve Kristin Kumar for the position of inclusion facilitator at Farragut Middle School?
So moved.
On a second?
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, Ms. Kumar, and also congratulations on your board position in the Chemical Hills.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
We also have other personnel items, B through D. Were there any questions from trustees regarding these appointments? One is a memo from Joe Monarano regarding cleaners. I didn't see that until just a moment ago. Is there a motion to approve personal items, B through D? On a second?
Second.
All in favor? I want to thank faculty members for participating in the summer learning program and the extended school year program as that is essential for many students this summer during this crisis. Next, we have our minutes. Are there any questions regarding the minutes from June 15, 2020 or June 17, 2020? Is there a motion to approve both the minutes from June 15 and June 17, 2020?
Second.
All in favor? Is there a report out from the diversity committee?
Okay, you can hear me? Okay, so there was a meeting on June 18. I apologize for the fact that I don't have my notes from the meeting. So I'm just going to give you a very brief summary from what I remember off the top of my head. And so it'll be very brief. Basically, we just did a review of the work that the committee covered this year and we launched into a discussion of work that we're hoping to launch next year. And there was a substantive part that went into the new initiative that's been launched called Silent and Volume and Loud and Voice. I believe that there was an email sent out regarding that new initiative on June 19, which has more substantive information about it. So it was a more of a recap, I would say. So I will look forward to giving you a more thorough, fleshed out recap of what happened at that meeting, but we did in fact meet on June 18 on our way to ending up the meeting.
Thank you, Sylvia. And I can speak briefly on the policy committee. We have not met since our last board meeting. However, we had been speaking together with Valerie regarding an audit of our policies. And Valerie was able to gather information from NISBA regarding a proposal to do that and the cost to do that. So I don't know, Valerie, if you could just speak on that briefly.
Um, the policy committee had a discussion about how to approach the review of policies, how to prioritize which policies we should look at and then, you know, make sure that they comply with NISBA recommended or suggested changes. In that conversation, I, you know, we talked about some approaches, I learned later on in a separate conversation with our internal auditor, in terms of discussing some potential areas for review, I mentioned, you know, I asked if they did any policy audit work or inventory just to help, in this case, our policy committee to be strategic about which policies we identified that we would need to revise. And then that was the beginning of the conversation around, you know, how to, you know, how to proceed with that. Subsequent to that, I then conducted some research to determine who else was doing this work. And since NISBA is our policy resource, they provide us with the updates. It made sense to pursue their option or their, their service, which is, you know, the board is approving in this particular agenda, which will, again, help us to determine how to prioritize our time and which policies we should be focused on. So for example, our council already, you know, signaled that we need, we need to take a look at the sexual harassment policy, which apparently has changed in some ways that would require that we meet and address those changes prior to August. There's an early date in August. So it is really important that, you know, in having the service, we can more proactively identify those policies that need our attention before, you know, we have something that's happening that, you know, we have to sort of move very quickly on. So that's the nature of the recommendation and the rationale for why we're pursuing this compliance audit.
Valerie, can you help us understand the difference between what we're paying for now, which is some sort of update process, review and update process from NISBA with the compliance review process?
Sure, the NISBA service that we subscribe to, so districts have a choice. They can go the NISBA service route, which is the New York State School Board Association, or they can go the Erie-Bosse's two route, which is, you know, offers the same service. So each of those entities, you know, would share policy updates with, you know, the Board of Education or the Policy Committee. And, you know, those are, you know, they represent changes that are made, but we have a lot of policies and there may be changes that we have missed or, or there have been, there's some need to adjust policies that are associated with those. So the, the update doesn't provide the level of analysis that we need to make decisions about which of these policies. It'll get our attention for that one that comes out, but then there are probably others in queue that we should also pay attention to and would also need to adjust accordingly.
And is, have, do you know if we've done a compliance review of our policies?
I don't know for certain. I can answer that just from being on the policy committee for two years. If you review, if you look through the board policies, you will, you will see at the bottom on many of them revised 2014. And so that predates my participation on the board. But my understanding was that at that point, and likely we could look through records, but I haven't. But I think likely in 2014, there was this type of audit done.
I'll just try and, there was a renumbering that had to go on. The, all the policies had to be renumbered and that's what happened up until 2014.
So it was renumbering, it wasn't necessarily substantive content audit. If we could just get clear, I think what would be good is to get us into a cycle that is appropriate. So for example, if it's, you know, if it's a best practice or recommended because of the number of changes that we do it every, you know, seven years or something of that nature, that we get on that cycle. You know, I think, on the other hand, if, if we're in a position where we're really, you know, sticking to the, the update process really effectively on a year in, year out basis, it may be less needed. I think right now we're just in this place where we're questioning when it happened. But if, in, in agreeing to do this audit, what would be helpful for me? But if in agreeing to do this audit, what would be helpful for me is if we just knew the last time we had a compliance. And if the answer is, you know, nobody here knows, that means it hasn't been done in 15 years. But I think it would just be good to know that piece of data. And then the recommended frequency too. Thank you.
There are some new business also. First, which is recommendation of Board of Education meeting dates. I don't know if the board has had a chance to review those. You'll see that based on recommendations from Valerie and board members. We've tried to take into account a mixture of Monday and Wednesday evenings, which is different practice than we've had in the past. So I don't know if everyone has any, if everyone has had a chance to look at those or if there've been any questions about that.
I'm assuming Valerie, these are reflective of your needs on Mondays, right?
They are. So the board and I had a discussion about the New York State Council of School Superintendents. Winter or fall conference as well as the winter conference, which happens to take place on Monday. Actually, the kickoff is Monday. There's some earlier meetings that happen on Sunday, but Monday is really the kickoff of the conference. So it's the key source of professional learning for superintendents in New York State. So it's not something that, you know, I'd like to miss since I have attended and have found, you know, found it to be very valuable. So we compromised instead of changing the date completely to a Wednesday, which, you know, did not work for other board members. The recommendation from the board to simply change the dates on though during the week of those two conferences from a Monday to a Wednesday. Janine, do you want to open the other, the list of dates? You put up the other calendar, but just the list of them. So that was a good compromise. That works out. So it doesn't, you know, cause any further conflict with the dates. We also chose August 26 as the first date of a board meeting. Because last year, the first board meeting was August 27. So that's, you know, in keeping with, you know, with that, you know, as a practice, so it's before the school year starts. It's particularly important because there could very well be some appointments that we have to make. So it's always good to do that before, you know, the official first start of the day, which may be virtual or brick and mortar. And this first official start of the school year would be September 2. And then every other meeting takes place twice a month. You know, what we didn't discuss is, you know, which, you know, it's up to the board in terms of whether they want to consider this. Since it's, you know, we're in the professional learning, whether it is a book study or, you know, as I said, other types of presentations. So that's just a thought for the board as we, you know, look at those dates and think about, you know, how to shorten some of our board meetings. Because the presentations are the things that really extended our time a great deal. But as I said, that's, that's, you know, food for thought for the board. But the other dates are consistent with how we've planned. And certainly you have, you see the other dates for the board, the budget vote and so forth. So that's what we're presenting to you.
And the board traditionally has had a retreat over the summer. And that has yet to be scheduled, but will be scheduled. And at that point, perhaps that's the best venue to discuss the structure of the meetings. Whether we want to decide to keep business meetings exclusive to one of the monthly meetings as well as some other items, some other suggestions regarding just those decisions going forward. So are there any other questions regarding the meeting dates or comments?
Throughout the idea of, you know, doing our best to time box items, which I think we've tried in the past. Probably want to get back there. The other is, a couple of years ago, we actually did do official committee reports, which I found was helpful to quicken the committee section. I actually developed a template. I'd love to talk about kind of getting back to something like that to try to quicken some of the meetings.
Great. Then we also have some new business item B, the summer learning program. I don't know if Valerie or you, Melissa, wanted to speak about that?
Go ahead, Melissa.
Sure. So we will be using a number of different tools, web-based tools with our summer learning program. So what you see in that memo is both a description about those tools and also a reference to our staff who will be facilitating. And I have to thank them. They've been engaged in training, asking really good questions and thinking about how to differentiate for the needs of their learners. So one tool that we'll be using as a supplemental resource is something that we already introduced in grades K through eight, which is DreamBox. That's an adaptive web-based mathematics resources, resource. And there has actually been a peer-reviewed study around student growth in terms of using it a certain amount of time at certain grade levels. So that's one of the tools that we'll be working with. Another one is called Edge Annuity. And the junior version of Edge Annuity that they acquired is called Odysseyware. So Odysseyware is available K through five and Edge Annuity is grades six through 12. Edge Annuity also allows us the opportunity for content and credit recovery. So we do have, I would say, a hand and a half full of students who do need some credit recovery in one or a few courses. So that will give them the opportunity to do that. And those courses are self-contained within the web-based resource in the sense that there are teacher videos and content that's created. However, there is a high level of opportunity for our teacher facilitators to modify or adapt course content working within the framework that's necessary for credit recovery. So we have two different tones that are going on with the summer learning program. And one is, you know, they're both around, they're both around learning. And certainly the joy that comes with that. One is also for students for whom there is an emphasis on being able to pass courses. So we want to make sure that we have increased attention there to help them through. So Edge Annuity will be our resource around that. The third resource that we will be working with, which is available in grades three through eight, is Achieve 3000. And that is a tool that we're specifically using for ELA. It provides access to really engaging texts and the texts and the questions. And the way that students or teachers are working with that resource are, it's malleable in the sense that you can have students that are working at different Lexile levels with a particular text on a particular content. So I'll give the example of chocolate because that's always on my mind. So if they're reading a text on chocolate, it's differentiated at multiple levels. So there will be, in terms of the takeaways for discussion, students can be heterogeneously grouped so that they can have a discussion about the content of the text. And yet, the way the text is designed is differentiated and adapted based on the needs of various ranges of learners. So that is something that is also Achieve 3000 connected with, with science, with mathematics, with current events. So that's integrated in terms of the text that students have availability to. So we will be working with different tools at different levels. And we're doing that strategically, both in terms of what students need and also giving facilitators the opportunity to work with some of these resources. DreamBox, we've already vetted as something that has been tried and true and already incorporated. And we do see that being used long term. And with the other two resources, the Edge Annuity/Odysseyware and Achieve 3000, the summer learning program allows us to delve more deeply into those resources and to learn more about them on the ground because they are new to the district. And they are also very well received by the region. They are resources that are being used in multiple places. So that's a little overview about the web-based resources. We have teachers for the program that have been assigned to groups of students at different grade levels. At the high school level, we were strategic in making sure that the teachers were assigned based on content and not necessarily grade level. So we have some people that have expertise in ELA and other people who have greater expertise on the ground in mathematics. So staffing has been considered in that way as well. So we're very excited about the program. And it promises to be fun and engaging and gives students lots of opportunities to be involved with these different learning experiences.
And I just want to add one more item. I know it's always important for you to hear that we, you know, that we personally have experience with these tools. For me, Edge Annuity goes back a couple of districts, as does Achieve 3000, as does DreamBox. So I have personal experience with these tools. And the reason why they, I felt comfortable with, along with Melissa bringing these forward is that certainly Edge Annuity has expanded well beyond its initial sort of purpose, which was a tool for high school students who may have passed a course. And maybe they passed their global studies course, but they didn't pass the regions. It's a pretty daunting task to wait until, you know, the next, you know, year to take that test. So this, this resource is really valuable for students who may be in that category. And certainly for those, as Melissa mentioned, who may need some content recovery. So it's every known regions, it's all the regions exams and all the regions content, all the content for grades three through eight, all those assessments as well as some AP exams. So it's a pretty robust system that gives us a lot of leeway. And certainly Achieve 3000 and DreamBox are truly computer adaptive. So they, so after a pre-test, the content is set at the level at which the child is functioning. That's pretty amazing. So it's not only just for children who might need, you know, some additional support. It's also an acceleration tool, which is rare to find both sitting in the same platform. So for both Achieve 3000 and for DreamBox, if I'm a student, if I'm a ninth grader who's reading at a 12th grade level, the content is presented to me at a 12th grade reading level. For DreamBox, if my mathematical abilities are, if I'm third grade, but I'm functioning at first grade, at a first grade mathematics level, the content is presented to me at the first grade level, obviously with the ability for the child to improve over time, which is again, another key component of these, of these tools. Melissa and I also talked about the importance of making these available, you know, beyond the summer as another supplementary tool for students. Now, there's a cost associated with that, but of course, we're looking into that, you know, not only from the standpoint, whether we're in the brick and mortar environment or the virtual environment. It's an important supplementary tool for students to have so that they're working independently. They're working anytime, anywhere, and their parents can also see what students are doing and also kind of be involved in their ongoing learning. So they're really, you know, we're very happy to be able to have gotten licensing. And I want to thank Melissa for working around the clock to get that, those resources in place. But we, they're not, they're not just for the summer program, but we wanted to use them now so that we could learn more about how we can expand them in the coming year.
And I just want to add one thing that Valerie didn't mention, which was when we were in our professional learning session with the Edge Annuity/Odysseyware component. You know, Valerie actually said to the vendor, you know, it would be great if we could just have that at no cost to the district. And actually, that's what ended up happening, you know, right now for the summer, K through five, you know, we brought that to life. So I did want to recognize that and say thank you because that was really incredible. So.
We don't ask, the answer will always be no.
Thank you. Are there any board trustees with comments or questions regarding the summer learning program? And the platforms just described? So I don't know if these are items that we need to vote on. I'm unclear.
Yeah, Lauren, if you could vote on them because they're contracts that we need to sign off on.
That's what I thought. I'm just, you know.
Thank you.
Nailing things out. All right. So is there a motion to approve the new business items? A and B, which are the Board of Education meeting dates and the components of the summer learning program? In a second? All in favor?
I had Jeremy and who else?
Doug.
Doug? Okay, thank you.
So we do have a portion for a second public comment. There are several members of the community on board. Are there any community members interested in comment? All right. Are there any Board of Education comments?
I just wanted to take a minute to say several thank yous to Doug for being board president for the past few years. I know it's been incredibly time consuming. So we all very much value your leadership and are glad that you're staying with us. And thank you to Lauren and Sylvia for stepping up into those new roles. I wanted to congratulate Kristin Kumar. I just couldn't be more thrilled to have her joining as inclusion facilitator. I know her from Hillside and the great work that she did there. So that's just a terrific development. And all your work on the summer learning classes, I know that was a real hustle to get that done. And finding these new programs online, especially one for ELA, is very valuable. So thank you. And the last, I just wanted to give a special shout out to Valerie for looking into the coaching for the new Farragut Middle School administrators. I just, I think that's an area that's so often overlooked. And it's just so valuable in multiple ways. So I really appreciate that you know the value of that. So thank you for implementing it. And welcome to our other, Jeremy.
Great. Thank you, Allison. Are there any other board trustee comments?
I just want to formally welcome Lauren and Sylvia to your roles as president and vice president. Thank you for taking on the leadership at a time where it's, you know, fairly uncertain what we're doing. So it's going to take some time, focus and energy. And similarly to Dr. Henning Peedmont, Ms. Mansky, Valerie and Melissa, depending on which direction we go, last names or first names, for your, you know, continued leadership in what is obviously going to be quite an up and down summer. I think we all have recently read that Governor Cuomo has decided he still doesn't want to give too much direction. And so we're, I guess, trying to figure out when we actually have to put this plan in, which it looks like that date might actually be shifting. So. But I want to say thank you for being the first superintendent Valerie that I've ever had on June 30 and July 1 at the same time. So look forward to the year ahead. Thank you, everyone.
A similar topic there as well, is what Doug mentioned. I think we are definitely waiting on Governor Cuomo. And I wanted the board to just be involved as much as Valerie and Melissa want us to be. Do try to come up with your plan. But I think these meetings, obviously, we don't have a lot of public input this summer. And I think we have three or four people. or four people watching. And I don't know how much input we all need, but I do want the board to focus that we are an incredibly wealthy and lucky district, and we do not have transportation issues, we do not have spacing issues. And if it's possible moving forward in any way you want to use us, Valerie, we have an incredible amount of outdoor space, and we can try to do so many different ways to get our school going, whether it's the Harvard model of letting in certain grades into the building and trying to be teaching outside. And obviously, this is one of many cases where you cannot please 100% of our community. And it might even be a place where you cannot, you cannot succeed in satisfying the needs of 70% of our community. But Hastings is very lucky. It's a small town with a lot of outdoor space and a lot of good administrators. So we're looking to support you as you try to figure out a plan without any guidance from Albany. Best of luck.
Thank you, Jeremy. And I wanted to thank, I was speaking, I was still muted, but thank you so much, Jeremy, for the support, the board support, which has always been present. And I just wanted to remind our community that Sylvia, Lauren, and Allison serve on that school reentry planning committee. So, you know, there is always, you know, board presence. And certainly, you know, before anything is sent to Albany or placed in a portal, it will be brought forward to the board, because we know what happens, what happened the last three months. You know, we get a lot of love letters from the community when things don't go well. So it's in our best interest as well. And Doug, I wanted to thank you for your leadership, you know, from the beginning, you know, since I met you, you know, last year during the recruitment process. You've been an incredible leader. And, you know, all the things that have happened that have sort of placed the district on a different course, then you've been responsible for making, you know, sure that it took place. So it's no small thing, being a board president. And I think your leadership has been incredible. And I want to thank you publicly for, you know, being just an incredible board president and a very supportive board president, and a board president who's always interested in the best interest, in the best interest of the system and all the children and educators and families and community members. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you, Valerie. Thank you.
Well said.
I'd also like to thank you, Doug, and thank you for the leadership and the direction you've brought the district. I want to thank board trustees for the nomination, and also to Sylvia for agreeing to contribute as vice president with that nomination. I'm happy to be working with Jeremy Galland. And I look forward to our retreat this summer, when it gets scheduled. We can put in some practices that make us an effective group that can support Valerie and Melissa and the building leaders in providing education to our community, no matter in what capacity, whether it's in person, partially in person, or virtual in the coming year. And I just want to thank you all for taking time out this summer in advance to do that. And with that, are there any further board comments, I should ask? Is there a motion to close the Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Bye.
Have a great day, everyone.